We'll see if people come in. So. Hi, I'm Janet Anderson. I called to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM. I will confirm that Kirsten has started recording this meeting. And this meeting is happening via Zoom with live streaming to YouTube on the Lewisboro TV channel. The public can view the meeting via Zoom or YouTube. And we have confirmed that the YouTube feed is active and working. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Orders, no one is at our usual meeting location at 79 Baton. Although at this point, this might be a lot more usual than the old meeting room. I have confirmed with Kirsten, our Planning Board Administrator, that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. Joining me on the Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Charlene and Delicato, Jerome Kerner. I think that's all right now. And but with me, we do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before us.
Janet, Maureen, and Greg have asked for the Zoom meeting ID to be sent to them. So they'll be on shortly.
Good. Okay, so as I indicated before, our Planning and Wetland Consultant, Jan Johansson, is expected to be a little late, but we have Dave Sessions here to cover the matter until Jan can join us. We also have Council Judge Seabird, Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad, and the CAC Chair John Wolf. Okay, so the Governor's Executive Order number 202.1, which has been renewed, enables the Planning Board to meet remotely and electronically to function on behalf of the town. In accordance with the executive order, we intend to post both the recording and later a transcript of this meeting to the town website. And a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. That's the only time we expect to take public comments, and I will describe the process before we begin that hearing in a few minutes. The public has joined muted and without video until that point. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone to hear over the inevitable background noises. And to ease the recording of our votes, I will poll board members individually. Okay, let's get started.
Want me to go ahead?
Well, so, um, who's that?
That's Stephen Helms with the Helms Group Architects, representing Apex Personal Training.
Okay, well, so let me, let me introduce it. We, the first item on my agenda tonight is a decision for calendar number 0118 PB. This is for Apex Personal Training, 20 North Salem Road, Cross River, New York. And it's an application for change of use and a waiver of site development plan procedures. And we did receive a new plan from Apex indicating the layout of the equipment in the old and new portions of their, of their, their facility. So, okay, Stephen.
Okay, good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Board. Thank you for having me. Hopefully, my, my clients are on board tonight. I am representing.
Good evening.
Good job, guys. How are you doing?
John, it's Gaz. Apex Personal Training LLC. We were before your board last month on the 19th. And there was several items that were discussed and requested. One particular was the layout of the, of the gym equipment, how it relates in the existing and the proposed area. Subsequent to our meeting, we went ahead and revised and updated our drawings, indicating that in the expanded area, which I'll be happy to share my drawing in a moment. And then we were also asked to send our drawings, the updated drawings, to the Building Inspector, Joe Angiello, which we did, and I believe he had submitted a letter dated February 12th or February 11th to your board, stating that he has no objection to the parking deficiency and to the proposed project. That drawing also went to Mr. Johansson for his review. And I'd like to just see if I could share my screen if I can, Chair. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, this is the, two drawings, drawing one and two. Drawing two represents the, basically, the equipment that we, we're, I discussed with my clients what they have as far as inventory and how we wanted to space it out in the, in the green area spaced back in here. And so that, that has been shown for promoting social distancing between the equipment and how we're going to use that space. We also got in, I had a discussion with the Building Inspector about exits. We do have two separate exits for the building. And this, again, just to remind, this is a permitted use in this, in this zone district. And Gaz and John, if you want to add anything to this application, feel free to voice your.
No, it's pretty much it. You know, we need the space to, you know, to separate, you know, distance our clients. They, you, you know, the board requested a COVID footprint, and that's our COVID footprint. That's kind of how we think we need to do business, I guess.
Okay, great. I, I think it is pretty clear. Thank you. And I think the other thing that we are still waiting on is the Westchester County Department of Health approval, but I believe that is a condition of the resolution. So unless anyone has any questions on the plans, I think we can stop sharing and ask Dave to briefly tell us the highlights of the resolution that is in front of the board.
Excuse me, Chair, that letter is on file from the Health Department from Delroy Taylor. As long as the Meadows has no objection to this project, they don't have any objection. So that is in, on the record in the files.
I do have a question, Janet.
Okay.
I appreciate the addition of the equipment in the green area, but I'm wondering why the note on there says turf field. Is that normal?
Flooring.
That's, that's just the flooring. That's.
I understand. Is that, is that typical for gym equipment?
Yeah, it's either rubber or, it's either rubber flooring or turf flooring, and it was just cheaper to go turf. To be completely honest with you, the one-inch rubber flooring is just, it's expensive.
You have that in the yellow area, right? The rubber flooring all throughout here.
Yeah, and it was just aesthetic, just to kind of put our logo in the middle and kind of make it look like it's, it's just a different vibe, a different look, so to speak.
Well, I understand. It just threw me off because I had been thinking that, that, that could be a team, team sport area, which would probably double the occupancy in terms of the number of people.
There's no room for that.
Yeah, we'll have equipment around the whole.
Yeah, I know that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we should have the, that letter should be on there from Westchester Health. We should be good to go.
Yeah.
We also filed for a demolition permit to, to, to keep this project moving forward. That is, has been submitted this past week to the Building Inspector.
Okay.
Would you like me to stop sharing the drawing at this point?
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, and I, unless anyone has any other questions, I'll ask Dave to go through the, the resolution.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wherethas, as most of them are pretty, pretty standard. Really, highlights of the project is the change of use, obviously, from professional office to the training facility. There are no physical changes to the exterior, outside of the building. They basically just want to expand, you know, the interior. We did need to get, or they did need to get permission from the Meadows for the increase in the flow, and that's what we were talking about with respect to the Health Department. So the County Health Department does need to officially sign off. I know we've had some indications that they're comfortable with it. To my knowledge, we haven't actually gotten anything in writing from the Health Department, but it sounds like it's forthcoming.
I'm sorry to cut you off. I'm pretty sure you had, we have the letter from the Health Department and the Meadows both signed off. I think Stephen has, I'm pretty sure we sent that.
Is that, is that right, Stephen? You have that? Yeah, I have a letter. This is when we started. I have to, let me, a moment. Let's see. Based on the information provided in the above attachment and the unused capacity at the Meadows at Cross River Sewer Works, the department has no objection to the proposed actions. Delroy Taylor, P. Associated Engineer, WCHD. Now, this goes back when we did the first one.
Yeah, we already sent out the first meeting, I'm pretty sure.
Exactly. And we have the letters from the Meadows confirming they have no objection to the, the.
All right, just in case, or to make sure we have it, could, would you mind resending that letter to us and that will, that will just, you know, make sure the file is complete?
Good, thank you. There is a, there's a shortfall on parking with respect to the use. I think we needed per code 67 parking spaces, so there's an about 11 space deficiency. But the fact that there's, we're incorporating shared parking into this, into the situation, I think, I think we should be covered in that respect. And as far as the, you know, the wherethas, again, as I mentioned, they're pretty, pretty standard. We talked about orchard. Everything else is pretty, pretty standard stuff. So I think we're in good shape, Janet.
Great, thank you. So I would look for a motion to approve the resolution that was previously distributed to all of us about to, for a change of use permit approval and the waiver of the site plan procedure.
I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Charlene. Do I have a second? Jerome's waving. You're muted, but.
Second, don't we have to close the public hearing before the vote?
My goodness. Yes, I think we don't have an open public hearing on this one. This one is, that was part of.
Not in a public hearing right now.
Not in a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's part of, that's.
Part of the waiver.
Right, so I second the motion.
Okay. But thank you for, for staying alert to this. Okay, so I'm gonna, is there any further discussion? If not, I will poll the board. So I guess Charlene?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Jerome? You're muted, but I see a hand wave, so we'll say yes from that. And I also am yes, so the motion has carried. The resolution is approved and you're off to the, to, to an expanded area. So that's great. So.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you guys in here, right?
I get my exercise snow shoveling. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a continuation of a public hearing that opened in December 2020. Oops, sorry, I should tell you what it is. It's Gossip Brothers Nursery, calendar number 03-20 PB, calendar number 3720 WP. Gossip Brothers is at 1202 Route 35 in South Salem, New York. And this is an application for a site development plan approval, wetland permit activity approval for an existing nursery. So again, this public hearing opened in December 2020, continued to January, and again to tonight. It was really pending the ZBA review, and I understand that the January ZBA meeting was canceled. So there's a limited amount to what I believe we can do tonight, although we did get a new submission with some parking information, some limited information. So I don't know if anyone wants to review that or, and, sorry, it's a public hearing. Let me get my. So we will now start the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is for the board to hear the concerns and comments of the public. Comments should be addressed to the Planning Board, not to the applicant. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue, and in general, the board will not respond to comments at the public hearing. But the board will, of course, take public comment into consideration as we continue to review the application. Again, for the record, because of executive number, executive order 202.10, we are not meeting at a common location. We are holding the public hearing via video and telephone in accordance with Executive Order 202.15. We invited public comments by email before the meeting. The public can comment during the meeting by sending an email to planning@lewisboro.gov.com. And in addition, the public can speak at the meeting. In order to do that, raise your Zoom hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And I don't believe we have anyone on the phone, but if you are on the phone, you can press asterisk nine. Okay, so does anyone wish to speak at the public hearing? I don't see any hands raised. And Kirsten has let me know that she has not received any comment, comment letter since the one from the neighbors that was very much in support of this application. So with that, is there, is there anything from that any of the applicants, applicant representatives wish to speak on this?
Yes, good evening. I'll be brief, and then I'll turn it over to Tim Cronin. As everyone participating tonight and everyone in town and beyond knows, the Gossip family has been operating an existing nursery at this site for many, many years. It is a legally non-conforming use. And we're here because we're proposing, in addition to continuing the nursery use, and we're proposing to establish an accessory winery as a special permit use. And it, and we're here because the, the non-conforming nursery use never had an approved site plan from the Planning Board. So we were here to get that done. So essentially, Tim Cronin's site plan, proposed site plan is, 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 for the most part, an as-built plan, showing the existing structures and improvements that have been there for many years. And, and we all know, work very well in terms of traffic and, and parking and, and all the other issues. The only major changes that are proposed, new improvements include, then related to the winery accessory use, an installation of a water treatment system and a wastewater holding tank. We will be before the zoning board tomorrow evening for a public hearing on our special permit application for the winery accessory use. We meet all of the standards under section 220-43.6. And we're also going to be seeking tomorrow night a setback variance for the office trailer. So, Tim, would you want to jump in and describe any of the new submission?
You're muted, Tim.
Better?
Now we can hear you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tim Cronin, and my office put together the plan that is the action this evening. The plan hasn't changed much since the earlier submissions, except we've done a little clarification on some of the parking spaces, some of the truck maneuvering, and some of where the bulk storage areas are going to be for the various products that Gossip Nursery sells. But at this point, you know, in speaking with Jan Johansson, I think we've addressed his comments and pending a, hopefully, a positive return from the zoning board. We'll be back here next month for what we believe will be our second approval.
I think that's correct. So I, again, I don't see any comments from the public. And I don't know if, I don't see any questions here. I think we do need to continue the public hearing until March 16th. And we have already asked in our January meeting, we asked Jan to prepare a resolution. So we should be set to go unless there's anything unexpected that happens at the ZBA. Unless anybody has anything else, I think we're good. So.
Janet, I would just say, remind the board, or remind the board and the public that at the last meeting, the board did adopt a secret negative declaration, finding that the special use permit and the proposed accessory winery use will not have a significant effect on the environment. The board did advise colored sessions to begin preparing a resolution. We got a little hamstrung by virtue of the adjournment of the ZBA meeting. And the public hearing is really being kind of kept open at this point, really more for housekeeping purposes, but I would suggest we just carry everything over to March. Let's see what the ZBA does. And we should have a resolution with regard to what the Planning Board needs to do relative to this application at the March meeting.
Great. Okay, so unless anybody has anything else, I think we have, are done with this. Okay, thank you very much, and good luck tomorrow night, and, and we'll see you March 16th.
Right, thanks very much. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is is a wetland violation, calendar number 02-19WV, calendar number 60-19WP, calendar number 14-19SW, the Coleman Residence at 12 Red Coat Lane, Waka Bok, New York. And I don't see anyone on the, oh, Michael, okay, sorry. So I think the last that I saw on this was that Jan Johansson had said he needed some more information in order to really close out the violation and the permit.
Correct. And, and one of the things he needs is for the as-built survey, which we had submitted, but he wants it to be updated or revised, I should say, to show the as-built features, including the drainage. And with the snow cover that has been relentless for the past two months, the surveyor has not been able to locate the outlets. There's four outlets, is my understanding. So we're hoping that the snow cover melts and before next, your next meeting, we can have that as-built survey updated to show the drainage.
Yeah, there, there were actually four, I think there were four outstanding items that we needed to close it out. If I may, yeah. Certification letter from the engineer, certifying that all work and drainage was installed. Obviously, they need to wait for the snow melt to make sure that that's in, in, in order. In addition to the as-built that Michael, that Michael just mentioned, as-built planting plan that was prepared by the, the landscape architect, which is probably in a similar situation with the snow.
Right.
And then the, the notice of termination that was supposed to be submitted to the state. Now, Michael, maybe you can tell us, the NOT probably wasn't, I'm, I'm surmising that it wasn't submitted yet because he hasn't been able to review what's in the, what's in the ground.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, and the costs, the costs of construction were already submitted and reviewed and accepted. So yeah, so it's these four items that are really so depend, the snow melt dependent, right? That we're waiting for.
Okay, so I was thinking we should adjourn this until March, although perhaps with the snow, is this something that we should adjourn until April? Because to get it in in time to get reviewed.
That's fine. I'll leave that up to the board.
I think that snow's going away anytime soon.
Okay, so April, you're okay? Everybody's all right with that? Sort of nods? I mean, we'd like to keep these things moving and, but I understand it's, if, if things can't get done and, and turnaround can't happen, we'll, we'll say it goes to April. Okay, thank you.
All, all the, all the site work is done. It's just a question of documenting it.
Okay. And Judge, I, if, jump in if that's a problem, but I think.
No, not at all. I think it makes sense. Yeah.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 01-20WV, calendar number 12-20WP. This is the Valencia Residence at 1196 Route 35, South Salem. They have asked for this to be adjourned because they can't get things done because of the snow. So, again, now this one, we have been waiting on some items since before the snow, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
Jim, yeah, if I may. I, I've been in contact with Jan. I'd ask, why don't we put this over to March, and Jan and I will contact the Valencias in an effort to move this?
Okay.
Yep.
That's, I know they're, they're saying some of it's snow, but I think there's more than just the snow that we need to deal with. So thank you very much. And I, and David, I'm sure you will let Jan know that as well.
I will.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a site development plan review. This is calendar number 06-17PB, the Wolf Conservation Center, Buck Run in South Salem, New York. This is an application for a site development plan approval, a special use permit, and subdivision associated with a private nature preserve. So I think perhaps the first thing is that to give a, a quick site walk report, we did have a, the board did have a site walk on February 13th in 2021. The attendees included the Planning Board members Greg, Charlene, and me. CAC members John Wolf, Eileen Nadelson, Val Andes, Mary Shaw, Joe Tanzi. And there were also representatives from the Wolf, Wolf Conservation Center, including Spencer Wilhelm, Matthew Giaronda, and there was a representative from the architecture firm. So we met there and parked and walked downhill towards the proposed parking area, which was a relatively flat area behind one Buck Run. We could see the neighbor's fence, which we were told was close to the property line, and we could see the house beyond. So we asked, and it was described how close to the property line the parking lot turn or, or arc drive area would be, and we asked about the lighting that would be in the parking lot area. We then walked back up the road towards the house where the new, the building, the new facility will go. As we walked up, we were told how the road would be widened, and it would be cut into the hill, and a sidewalk would be added along the uphill side. The existing house has quite a wooded, wooded yard, and we asked if many of the trees would be cut to allow the solar panels on the house or on the new facility to function. And we were told that many of the trees were dead, and that new colorful and low plantings would be installed in place of some of the, the trees that would have to come down. We then walked up the driveway of the current house that's there. We could see the corners of the new building staked. And it was clear how the proposed building both fit into the slope of the hill. And it was clear how the proposed building both fit into the slope of the hill. And we could see the upside slope where the which would provide an amphitheater area. As we walked back towards the parking area, we asked about the ground disturbance for the cabins in the composting toilet area. We were told the cabins will all go on concrete piers. And while the composting toilet will have a lower level, it will fit into the slope. So when we heard that there was relatively relatively small amount of disturbance in that area, we agreed we did not go to the top of the hill to see this area. So we concluded the the site walk at that point. I don't know if any other members of the board that were there need to would like to speak anything more about it.
Mentioned it was about twenty degrees.
Yes, it was. It was cool. And but but other than that, I mean, I think it gave us a chance to see a little bit more of the slope, understand a little bit more about where things were fitting. And I think seeing we had some discussions about how close neighbors were and we saw that one neighbor. So I think it was useful for that. Okay. So we have gotten some some progress on this and that in January, we agreed to issue secret notices. But I believe we were waiting for a long EAF form part one in order to do that. So I think perhaps it's time to ask the applicant about any updates or comments they have for us.
So good evening, Chairwoman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Janet Geras. I'm a partner with Del Bello, Danelle and Winegarten, Weisen Whittaker. Here on behalf of the Wolf Conservation Center. Sorry, I missed you all at the site visit. We were under an isolation order. We had COVID in the house, but everybody is okay. So we did, we did receive Jan's very lengthy memo, Jan and Joe's very lengthy memo, and we just got that on Friday. We are in the process of going through that now to respond to those things. I thought that you had a long-form EAF from us in connection with this. So if we did not get you something that you were waiting for, I apologize for that. We will take a look and see if that EAF needs to be updated since we were last, since it was last submitted. But I don't think much has changed since then. So I will take a look at that and we'll certainly get it back to you.
Okay. I would say that at the site walk, we also did see some I think I think we did, I think Spencer was showing us some pictures of the camping unit and some other things that might be useful to have submitted before our next meeting as well. Okay. Okay, are there any other comments, questions that anyone has? I think we also did in January, we already said we would refer this to the building inspector and to the fire department, and I believe that's moving forward because it will be important to get feedback from both of them on this.
We will reach out to them directly as well to see if we can set something up to perhaps walk them through the application and help them, you know, assimilate everything and try to turn some comments around.
Okay. So I think that's the majority here that we were, you know, to get secret going, we do need the long EAF part one. And that's, and then anything else you want to submit? And I think we're we're anxious to move this forward, as I'm sure you are.
Yes, we are. We're excited to be here. So we will turn those things around as quickly as possible, and we will start to respond to Jan and Joe's comments as well.
Great.
Yeah, and just one thing, Jan.
Yes, do you want to go through some of that, Dave? I don't know.
Probably not necessary to go through our our comments, but just a general comment is that there are quite a few comments. It's probably, it would probably be beneficial if we actually met with Matthew and or somebody else, Bibbo, just to go through them, whether it's on Zoom, you know, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. You know, there's there are a lot of comments here and they might be misinterpreted here and there. So the best way to do it is obviously either get on the phone, get on a Zoom, get into the room together and and go through them one by one, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with everything.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And I said, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. The, yeah, just I know you mentioned Janet before, but the you know, we are waiting on a review from the building inspector on zoning compliance and fire code. That's that's obviously important. So the quicker you can accelerate that and the fire department for that matter, those are those are key issues.
Okay. It's very confused, very confusing with two Janettes. Every time somebody says Janet, I jumped before.
Okay, I see Jerome has his hand up.
Yeah, it's kind of a general question, but I'm wondering if there's an anticipated construction schedule and part B of that is, is the financing in place and is it going to be fundraising? I mean, I guess behind the question is is a a question of whether or not the budget has been established and is in line with what you anticipated? Or might there be any significant changes that might happen? That process is completed. It's like a three.
Yep. So Spencer's with me this evening and I'll put him on the hot seat in terms of construction schedule. I know that, you know, we anticipated as soon as approvals were granted that we would try to get in the ground. I think that there has been or there will be a significant fundraising effort, but I also think that they've worked very hard on this particular design and coming up with the design and a budget so that this project can be constructed. So Spencer, I don't know if you want to add some more detail to that.
That's not working, Spencer. It's not.
Audio's off.
Yeah. Now we can't hear you at all. Oops, now you're muted.
I'm muted.
Spencer here?
Nothing. He's here.
Oh, there he is. He's talking, but Spencer.
All right, so who's.
This happened last time, too.
American Sign Language here we need. All right, Charlene has a question perhaps.
Yes.
You want me to fill in for Spencer?
Oh, Dean, there you are.
Sure, go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, well, we have a good portion of the money raised and we're pretty confident that we'll get the rest by the time we are starting construction. We cost estimated, we have a history with previous designs, as you know, been fully cost estimated out and we're pretty sure we are sure it'll fit within the budget we have and what we're able to spend. The only thing we're doing now, which Spencer would tell you about, we're making choices sort of, we're on the options phase and evaluating the options, but within the budget that we know that we can we can make. So this will get built.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that's that's good news, Dean. Thank you for jumping in on that. Charlene.
In line with what Jerome was saying, I believe at one point in in one document, I read that you'll provide a business plan. And if so, that would be very helpful to all of us, I think, because there's going a lot of property disturbance and I think that it would be advisable if we could have a better understanding of how you're going to continue on the budget with that and God, if something happens and you can't continue it, will there be money put aside in order to mitigate any things that you've done already?
So we're working on that plan for you. I think that there's there were some operations materials that you were looking for in a plan. Spencer's working on that. And you know, if can't afford to build it, we're not going to get a building permit. So.
Yeah, but I think also along with what Charlene, some of the questions that were came up at the site walk that would be helpful to have documented were things like how often would lights be on at night? You know, how often would the would the cabins be occupied? Is that a one night? Is that a one week stay? Is that, you know, and so we got some of the answers at the site walk, but I think it helps to have it. That, of course, is not a minuteed or documented meeting. And it helps to have that conversation. It's more appropriate to come in through a board. So that would be, you know, just.
And we're working on that operations manual. So we'll get that too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Yeah, we we are starting to update that. You know, going through the comments, it didn't say anything about a future use manual. So we will make sure that those comments are put in detail.
Great. Thank you very much, Spencer. I think, again, it was interesting to hear about some of those things on the site walk, but this is the the board meeting is the more appropriate forum to have them sort of documented for posterity.
Yeah, understood.
Great. Is there anything else that we want to ask of this group or any more assignments to give them? I will say thank you again for allowing us on the site. I did feel like the site walk gave me you know, while I've visited before, never really thought about this, the new building there, and this is, it was very helpful to see. So thank you for allowing us out. And I do know that you also invited, you know, other members of the board to have a chance to review it as if as necessary. So okay, thank you.
Before we before we leave, and Matthew knows this all all too well, I would just encourage the applicant, we've got Westchester County Health Department approvals that are needed. DEP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan approvals that are needed. A freshwater wetland permit from DEC is also needed.
Yeah, we're working on all those dizzying.
Well, as DO, so you know, from our, from all of our private work, we all know that sometimes the towns come through with their approvals a lot sooner than these outside agencies, and then the outside agencies want additional things addressed and then things change. So as long as you're, yeah, you're digging into those outside agencies, because at the end of the day, that's probably your.
Dave, you cut out a little there.
Can you hear me, Jan?
Yep.
Now I can. I'm maybe I was the only one, but I wasn't hearing for a bit there.
Oh. Okay.
There's an over under on the timing for the DEP approval.
Well, just. The over.
I'd take the over any day.
We can always put the. The wolves on them, so.
Hi, everyone. Matthew Ronda from Bibbo Associates here. Thank you, Dave. Yes, we are fully aware and and going down the 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 path of obtaining all those outside agency permits. Right now, we're actually completing water testing throughout the site on all the existing wells to identify the most suitable source and possibly alternative well sites. As you know, we developed the SWIP with the understanding that we will need DEP SWIP approval and contemplated all their requirements on that as well. But you know, your suggestion of sitting down and having a meeting to discuss our design so we can sort of be on the same page before we go down full bore with the DEP, I think would help.
Yeah, absolutely. And as you know, Matt, sometimes, you know, certain municipalities will give you one direction. DEC will give you another and DEP will give you a third. So you're you're torn in in three different directions. So if you're, if you, if we could put our heads together as far as what DEP needs and wants, you know, it's it's just better for the overall project.
Beneficial, absolutely.
Okay, anything further from anyone on this? Okay, again, you know, we're we're all excited to see you back and and have a plan. So we'll look forward as you know, when when the next submission comes in. I did not confirm this, but I believe that the submission date is February twenty-sixth for the next for March meeting. So that might be a little tight. So might see you in April.
That sounds good.
Yeah, we'll target.
We will get working on things right away.
Great.
About the circulation for lead agency. I mentioned the the updated EAF. There was a discussion at the previous meeting about a subdivision plat as well being required. Will that be necessary for circulation of lead agency or just the updated EAF?
I'm looking.
And we're waiting on some field work for that. So that's where we know we need to get you that updated plat, but there's some field work that needs to be completed in order for us to be able to get that to you. And you know, with snow on the ground makes it difficult.
I I don't want to tread on Dave's territory, but I think that if we have basically the, you know, the contours of the basically the site plan and the site development materials, the subdivision is somewhat secondary. So I think that coupled with the EAF would be appropriate for circulation, you know, for lead agency at this point.
Okay, great. Great, Judd.
Okay.
I also want to compliment Spencer on his T-shirt. I don't know if those are for sale.
I wore it specifically for you know, online.
Yeah. Thanks for noticing.
Building the brand.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. If, thank you. If there's nothing more, I think we move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a wetland permit review. It's calendar number sixty dash twenty WP. The McGinnis Residence, Seventeen Schoolhouse Road, Waukeah Park, New York. This is an application for the construction of a greenhouse, a covered dining area, spa and an extension of a of an existing patio. So.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm the site planner for the project. I believe with me on this call will be the project attorney, Michael Serignano, our project engineer, Alan Pilch, and the project architect, Patrick Crook. So if you will, I will, I will go through pretty much the plan of to give you guys a summary. We had had an opportunity to talk with the town planner and discuss some of the issues and try to try to come to a try to come to a point that maybe we're working together to try to get to the same point. So I'll start by sharing my screen. Let me know if that comes up.
It's up.
Everybody see that?
Yep, I can see it.
Okay, so the McGinnis property is a Seventeen Schoolhouse Road. In the upper left corner of the page, we're showing the entire twenty-three acre site. The development on the property is really focused on the southern, on the southern part of the site. The north is going straight that way to the left. The board will remember this project. The there's a main residence in this area of the property. And then there is some accessory structures that are. And then there is some accessory structures that are right here that were subject to permits. These are the accessory structures right here. And so has, the board will, will, will remember there was a lamp attic in this area. It occurred in the wetland buffer. We moved it out of the wetland buffer. And then move forward with other improvements to the property, including some patios and some landscaping and some mitigation around the property. So what this project is proposing is to essentially construct some outdoor improvements on the property that will really occur in areas that are, I'm just trying to move the screen. Computer's moving slowly. So this is the main residence here. This is the wetland line. This is the 100 foot DEC wetland buffer line, and this is the 150 foot town wetland buffer line. This was the original lamp attic. This is the real line driveway. This is the new lamp attic. This is the 50 foot side yard setback. Most of the improvements on the property occur along the eastern property edge, which is, it's all wooded on the other side. And that's because I think all the development was, was slated up in this area to get as far away from this wetland line as possible. So these are the two existing accessory structures. There's a stone patio in the back. We just recently installed a patio back here. And then there's about a three or four foot boulder retaining wall coming in this area. The improvements proposed that we're going to see in a minute, it's basically to put a roofed open, an open porch right in this area, a little sitting area, a fireplace. And then there's a little, a small spa in this area here. So in order to get that to work in there, what we need to do is, so this is looking at the back of the house. I just want to give you guys an idea of what we're talking about. When we get into plans, I think it'll make a lot more sense if we just look at the photos real quick. So this is the back of the house now, the back of the main house. This is the existing activity barn that's here now. That's the new patio we put in. The new activity, the new structure will connect from here to here. It's going to come across, it's going to come across from here and it's going to come across. And this is going to be a covered roof now. And what I think is significant here is a lot of this improvement that we're doing occurs over this existing driveway. This driveway is going to get pulled back this way. So we can get a parking court in here and allow for, basically the new structure goes right here. And what's happening, you can see that this, as I said, there's a, there's a low wall here. Now, this is the property line. Beyond this, it's all wooded. It comes over, there's about a three foot wall here. Now, we're going to have to extend this wall back and to the front this way in order to flatten the area out to allow the improvements to get put in. So now I'll go to the site plan. So again, this is the existing residence. These are the existing activity barns. You can see this is where the connection, the open covered porch is. So if you were looking at it from the, from the street, what you would see is you'd see the existing house, which is right here. That little corner is right here. And then you'd see this structure, which is this. What you're seeing in the back here, that taller thing, that's this activity barn. But it's basically this area here. This area here is going to be outdoor dining area. There's going to be a fireplace and a grill. And then there's gardens around it. And the existing driveway is right in this area here. So you can see the existing driveway. Where the, where the new work is being proposed, that red dashed line is the existing driveway. Comes all the way back in here and like that. So we're taking what's now the parking court, and we're going to move it over here. This is the new four foot wall we'll be installing. That will come in and run the length to bench the site down in order to get everything in there. So this is the, this is the, the new activity area, open area. It's an open pavilion type concept. This is a small addition. It's a storage shed. The pool equipment's actually going to go in here. This is the existing patio that's there now. And then we're going to be putting this small spa in this area that will overflow down into a lower catch pool to create a waterfall type of effect. We will need to install a small wall here, another small wall here. We've been working with Alan Pilch to pick up the storm, with the new stormwater, which Alan says is not really a lot because a lot of this again is happening over the existing driveway. Nonetheless, he's got an infiltration system in this area here. So that kind of gives you an idea of, 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 of what's happening. If you were looking at this from the property to the east and you were looking back, this would be the back. That's that sitting area we're talking about. This is the addition to the shed. And this is where the grilling area would be, which would be right in this area here. Of course, if you were looking at it from the back and looking back toward the building, you'd see the existing activity barn. You'd see the existing studio, which is this. That's what this is. That new, that new storage shed that's going to house the pool equipment. That's what this would be. The retaining wall to the side of it is what's here. And then looking back, you would see the, you would see this, there's a covered porch here. This is an open porch. These two things here are just covered roofs, that little black thing. It's just little covered roofs. And then you'd be looking back to the area connecting the buildings. So that's what's happening in terms of the architecture and the project attorney and the project architect went to the zoning board and they got 10 variances and we note them here. The board already has the resolution of approval for that. And again, the premise for the variance is where, because this is really the only developable, the only developable portion of the property in terms of trying to get as far away from the wetland as possible. Here's the wetland line. Here's the 150 foot buffer line. So that was the premise and the zoning board agreed it was logical that we should proceed and we should work in that area. Also on this plan, we provide the zoning analysis to explain what happened. We're showing a pool fence that's going to go around the backyard in this area here. It'll just, it'll just encircle this. It's, it's a very small area. And, and then there was also talk that there was a fire pit in the backyard. And that's what this was here. And I think that the discussion was, you know, can we, can we do something to make this a little, a, a little more softer, if you will. So we went back and we're about to, we talked about creating more mitigation, giving up lawn area and getting more planting in here. And what can we do for more mitigation? And part of that mitigation was going to be, we're going to take out these Belgium blocks and we're going to take out all this gravel. And we're just going to have a little mulch path around this with some tree stumps, some trees, tree logs to sit on. And we're going to be creating, we're going to be taking out a lot of lawn area and we're going to be, we're going to be adding, adding more planting. We're going to try to see what we can do to provide more mitigation for the, for the project. So we did a construction and erosion control plan. And one of the things we wanted to show on the construction plan and demonstrate what's happening here is, you know, what is the area within the, within the grading limit line, if you will? The grading limit line is this black dashed line. And, but what is the area within the grading limit line that's within 150 foot buffer? And what's that disturbance? Because that disturbance number usually indicates if that's, you know, 6,300 square feet, the, the board is usually looking for one to one mitigation or about 6,300 square feet. So we identified what that was in this. We call this subject area one. And then we went to a part of the property which we call subject area number two. And this is the, this is the portion of the, of the property where we're proposing to, to remove the existing lamp pen that was here and replace it with a small greenhouse of similar size. And that's what this would be. This is the existing lamp pen that's there. It's a similar sized greenhouse structure, kind of a glass with a metal frame type thing, attractive. It will be more centrally located in the paddock because there's, the idea is to have kind of almost parterried gardens and the owner likes to grow cut flowers. And so this is going to be laid out with flowers as part of some of the mitigation. We said, you know what, let's take some of that grass out of that paddock and we're going to turn this into a little wildflower meadow, meadow. It'll make a nice back, backdrop to this. But what we did was we went through this, we, we went through this area. And we, we provided a disturbance summary and we broke it down to what it was in December 2020, when we first talked to the board and what it is now. And what we come up with is that we, we've identified our total disturbance at about 14,034 square feet. It's not quite, it's not very different from, from the initial disturbance. But what is different is we only had 7,700 square feet of mitigation in December. And now we have 15,000 square feet of mitigation. And we're going to get to that in a minute. But what, what we're trying to do is instead of providing a one to one mitigation, impact to mitigation or mitigation to impact ratio, we're trying to provide a two to one impact to, or, or mitigation to impact area. And the owners felt that they were okay with giving up lawn areas and they thought it might, you know, they got a very big front lawn area. So they thought it might be more intimate and and more cozy to have more plantings in the backyard. So that's where we went and we prepared the wetland mitigation plan for the project. And what we did was we provided a summary on the plan where we, where we've identified what was the mitigation we showed in December 20, in December 2020. And that's what, that was these green areas. We had the green areas and we had about six or 7,000 square feet. This is that meadow, that, that wetland meadow, the wildfire meadow that I was talking about earlier. And so what we did was we went and, you know, we show that just in the white circles, that was the mitigation that was put in with the previous project that the board will recall that finished up about a year or two ago. And then in 2020, we came back in December and we showed the mitigation areas in green. And we had about 7,500 square feet. But since we've been talking to the board about this project and talking with the owners and talking with the town planner and saying, what could we do? And say, well, let's try to provide more mitigation and, and, and make this project so it works for everyone. And that's what we've done. So all these areas you're seeing in yellow, they were previously lawn areas. And now they're all going to be reclaimed to planting. At this point, we just have a, a, a typical planting palette that we will be developing a full planting plan for. We just didn't have time to get to that, but we will. But I think what we've shown is we can, we can put this extra planting in. I think it can be very attractive. It's going to make the backyard seem a lot cozier. Everything's going to be nestled with plantings. We've got plantings on the eroded stream banks in this area. All this area that was formerly mowed lawn is taken out. This is where that fire pit area is. And you can see that, you know, we're planting all around that. We're going to, we're going to thicken up this area here. We're also going to keep the mitigation that we had proposed previously in 2020, 2020, where we were going to bolster the existing mitigation plan. And there was some discussion, you know, was that adequate? I'm of the position, the more roots you get into a wetland buffer planting area, the more filtration that you're going to have. It just makes sense. There's more roots. There's, there's more opportunities for pollutants to get bound up in those roots and to get converted into the plant mass. But the point was well taken with the board. And so we went back and created all these additional mitigation areas. And so we did it over here. This is the septic area. We're going to be planting the whole back of this. This is kind of a, it kind of slopes down. This is kind of a mound system, septic. And we're also going to be putting more plantings inside the paddock. So what we tried to do is, was come up with, with a plan that we think that could work for the owners and be very attractive, but also address the concerns noted by the board. I don't know if Alan is with us or not. I know he had other meetings. But Alan, if you're here, you jump in? It's not.
I can certainly jump in here.
Oh, good. Maybe Alan, you want to explain how you handle the drainage?
Yeah, but basically what we've done here is we, there were, it's a very minor increase in the amount of impervious surfaces. When I calculated the curve number, it increased by one. So in order to attain the peak rate attenuation for a 25 year storm, what we had proposed is putting in subsurface chambers just to the, I guess that's to the west of the pool area. Since the, because the septic is in the front yard, it really didn't make sense to put something there. So we really wanted in the backyard. So it'd be, so we'd have nothing upgrading to the septic. So what we're doing is picking up runoff from some of the buildings and some of the patio areas and conveying that into the subsurface chambers and then basically just discharged any excess runoff that is collected to an outlet control structure. And basically it runs, what it does is it runs through the wetland plantings, the mitigation plantings that's on this plan. What we're able to show as well is that the stormwater management plan as devised will provide peak rate attenuation for all storms up to the 25 year storm. I know there was a concern expressed, well, two concerns. One was you need to do a percolation test. We'll do one when the, say the snow clears up a little bit and the ground maybe is slightly more thawed. But the other comment was regarding the separation distance between the bottom of the chambers and the, and the groundwater table, which we were able to raise the chambers up by about one foot in elevation. And now I've achieved a full three feet of separation between that and the groundwater table. And the chambers are still embedded into the ground. So they're not like sticking out of the ground or anything, you know. The, the relationship of the chamber to the existing grade has been maintained is, and is in accordance with the Stormwater Management Design Manual. But we're able to do that so as to achieve that full three foot separation between the bottom of the chambers and the, you know, and the high seasonal groundwater table, which we observed during our deep hole test that was done during December. And as you can see, what we're doing is collecting runoff from some of the new rooftops and some of the existing studio and actually some of the drains that are also present in the the new covered areas and putting it into the chambers. So that's how the stormwater management plan essentially works.
Alan, can I interject for a second here?
Sure.
Yeah, as long as, and I'm sure you're aware, there's the chambers, is any more than half the chamber in fill?
I don't believe so. I think what you're going to find is that the, it's a fairly level area there and that I, I know what you're getting at here with regard to it. But I also will say that the, the concern about being in, they're not in fill per se, because the, the chambers themselves are in the, you know, they're embedded into the ground still. So you could take a look at that too. But I know the usual concern about fill is that there's going to be a seep that's going to occur. And the chambers are not really there for infiltration purposes. They're for peak rate attenuation purposes as well. So it's something I guess you can review and take a look at.
Yeah.
I'd say that it's, it's at the, let me think, the north end. They're very much embedded at the south end, near where the walkway enters. It's probably about half.
Yeah.
Remember, these are the shallow chambers. These chambers are eight inch, eight and a half inches high. These are the C4s.
Yeah.
From Poltek. So they're very shallow chambers in the first place.
Alan, are the bottom of all the chambers in, in basically virgin gray?
Yes, they are.
They're all.
They're in virgin ground there. That's correct.
Okay.
They're not, they're not, I mean, considering it's an eight and a half inch high chamber, they're all still in, in the ground.
Yeah, just, I'm just suspecting that your perk is going to be pretty slow there. You know, the majority of that site, as you know, is, you know, pretty shallow groundwater. The soils are not great. So, you know, depending upon what you, what you get for your perk rate obviously is going to dictate the size of the chambers and how much you need. But we're not there yet, obviously. We still need to do perks.
Right. We, we understand that. Unfortunately, this winter's been a little more challenging, I think, for a lot of people.
Yep.
So Alan, I, I can't remember if, I think there was some discussion about a, a potential small drought, drawdown of the pool. Just enough to get past the sort of tile at the top. Would that be coming into this chamber as well?
Yes, it would. And they're, they're large enough to accommodate because it's a pretty small spa that's going in.
Okay, good. I, I thought I'd heard that before and I wanted to make sure that was still true.
I know it was addressed in the stormwater report that was submitted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Jerome.
It was mentioned by Jerry that the new construction, the covered dining area and the gazebo are in the area that was existing driveway. Was that driveway paved or gravel?
Gravel.
Pardon me?
Gravel.
Gravel. So there, so there would be additional impervious, you were, I don't know if that's been calculated, but you now have the roof areas that replacing the gravel. Has that been considered?
It, it has. And in the analysis, that's exactly what was considered.
Okay.
So I have a question again. Could you remind me what the footing under the greenhouse is? Is that on gravel or is that a, a board? What is the bottom there? greenhouse is? Is that on gravel or is that a, a board? What is the bottom there?
We get the gravel base and it will be set kind of like a pole barn with sonnets and with a gravel base.
Yeah, I, I thought that's what I remembered and I couldn't find it. So you know, in the, in the shed now, that used to be the lamb paddock that is going to get torn down. I think the last time we required that no fertilizer or chemicals or pesticides be stored in that area. I think the, the greenhouse now is moved over just a little bit. And obviously, I'm not I, I recognize that you use fertilizer as part of the planting of, of things. So I'm not really worried about its use, but I, I was wondering. I am, I am a little concerned about storing, you know, bags of fertilizer or pesticide or something there is, would I think it might be appropriate to use the same signage that was on the old shed. And maybe ask you not to store you know, bags of fertilizer or chemicals in that greenhouse as well.
I think that, I think that's a reasonable request. And I know we're out of the buffer on the other side where we have a few feed chests and you know, maybe what we can do is designate an area outside of the buffer. It's just across the driveway in case they need to get to them. So we wouldn't even need to do that. I think we can designate an area on, on this side. Which is all, you know, it's all close together. Here's the driveway. You just walk over here and you can get your, you know, they can get there. They can keep that stuff right in here with their feed and all the other things that they keep in the shed.
Yeah, I think something, it was part, partially the wetland buffer and partially the, the gravel substrate that would allow anything that spilled to be kind of go in or that got wet to sort of get in very quickly. So that was my my bigger concern. Other than that, I, I think, I think you did hear us. I'm, I'm happy to see there is a lot more mitigation proposed now. I think the other thing we talked about potentially was was demarking the wildflower meadow so it wouldn't get accidentally mowed or something. But, but I do see a lot more plantings in that whole area now. So I don't know, we had, had you still considered to plan to put some kind of demarcation there or not?
I think we can. I mean, we, we already have demarcation out there. That's what these are. These are the six-inch, six-inch pipes embedded into the ground, flush with the ground that demarcates, you know, where the, where the mowed lawn ends. And I see no reason why we can't you know, put them in this, on this line here. And so that line can always be easily established. It's a simple thing to do and I don't think the owners would have a problem with it at all.
Great. Okay. So does anybody else on the board? I can, I can't see everybody on the board, but I guess I would ask you to speak up if you have any comments or questions.
This is Maureen. I, I have a question. We've probably gone over this before, but just to remind just remind me, the existing activity barn in the existing studio, can you tell me? I'm not quite sure I understand the use case of an activity barn.
Well, it's just a hangout barn is really what it is. There's some couches in there and there's a little soda.
Is there a kitchen in there?
I think it's more like a, like a snack bar type thing with a little, like, it almost, I, I was only in there a couple of times, but it kind of reminded me of like like a soda fountain from the old days. You know, it had a little bar with that kind of thing. It's not a full kitchen. It's just, there's a snack bar. There's a large TV. There's like, you know, it's a ping pong table. It's that type. It's, it's not, it's not a sleeping.
No, no bathroom?
I believe it has a bathroom.
Is there a bathroom? Sorry.
I think so. I'll, I'll verify that, but I, I think there is. Again, I, I've only been in there a couple of times.
And how about in the existing studio, just if you're going to have the, I would imagine for this for my property, if you're going to have a, an area that you're designating as a with the fireplace and the couches on the east side of the property, right outside of the studio, then that would be the a logical place to use lavatories. Would that be?
You know, we'll, we'll, we'll check. I'm pretty sure there must be a bathroom in this area. This area here that is outside the existing studio, this is where the ping pong table, the outdoor ping pong table is. It's, it's all activity type of things. Every time I've been there, this existing studio really has been used mostly as storage as far as I've seen, but we, we, we will get you the information on, on what's being, you know, what exactly is going on in, in both of these. So then we'll get that written down.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
So I think our, our last real set of concerns had been about the, or strongest set of concerns had been about the mitigation area. And I think the, the plan now shows that they're not they're, they are actually using more area for mitigation, not interplanting, not depending on interplanting as a major mitigation. So that makes me much more comfortable with this. I, I would I guess I would start by asking Dave if he thought that this would be something that at this point would be something that you'd be comfortable with seeing go administrative. And then I will ask the board if they would consider that.
Yeah, we're comfortable with that at this point. The mitigation's been expanded. It seems to satisfy the, the concerns. We're definitely comfortable with it going administrative. One thing we didn't talk about tonight, and I, I know that Jerry and Alan are aware of this, but there's, there is a state wetland permit necessary. And I guess there has to be a public hearing for the wetland permit unless the planning board decides to waive that. So I'm just throwing those, those two things out there.
Yeah, so by going administrative, we would basically waive the, the need for a public hearing.
Yep.
Yeah, we would ask, we would ask the board to do that. It's, it's a type-two action, exempt action. The variance is 10 of them were granted by the zoning board with no neighborhood opposition. In fact, the only affected neighbor to the west of supported the application. And so we would ask it to waive the public hearing and refer this to Kellard Session to handle administratively. They're going to be involved. Jan and, and Dave and Joe, they're, they're going to be involved in the percolation soil testing. They're going to be involved in the construction details of the stormwater chambers and everything else. So I think it would make sense if the board is comfortable with the overall mitigation plan.
So perhaps Jerry, I could ask you to stop screen sharing so I can see people and, and maybe talk with people, you know, a little more on this, but you know, I, I, I would and I guess perhaps I see John now. So I don't know that I should ask for the CAC if there's any further comments that the CAC might have on this.
Our main concern was the expanded mitigation and the plan appears to have it. So I think we're satisfied with that.
Great. Okay. And you know, I do know that Jan will come back to us if he sees issues going on. I, I know that there are still some, some items that have to get addressed. Like some of the stormwater issues and, and so forth, but I I would look for any indicate, well, if we need a motion. Yes, Jerome?
I would move that we move this to an administrative approval and waive the public hearing for wetlands.
Do, I have a second.
A second.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, so this is a motion, so I will poll the board. So Jerome?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And I also say, yes, so the motion to make this administrative has has passed. Oh, and I see Jan has joined us. So, you know, he's here to hear that he's got work, more work. But so I think with that, unless there's anything else, thank you for, for all that's been done and for the, the expanding some of these, the mitigation for us so we could get this done and move it to administrative. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. And I know that appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number 09-21 WP, the Gorton residence at 22 Gilbert Road in South Salem, New York. This is the application for the construction of a rain garden and mitigation for the modified seawall. And I thought I saw Laura Gorton on, yes. And then if there's someone who is representing, yes, go ahead, Jan.
Len Tyser is here as well for the applicant.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Glenn Tyser's landscape architect. Laura was, I know, was having a problem getting on, so she connected?
Yes.
Great. So we've been brought in recently. Laura's selling the house and during the final inspection process, it was discovered that the, the rain garden that was designed and approved back, and I believe 09, had not been installed. Also, in that final report, there was a portion of the seawall where there was a notch. I don't know if I can share my screen. I can try. Let's see here. You see that?
No.
No, but my, my internet is the slowest, so I'd be the last to see it. But no, I don't see it.
Let me try that again. Still no?
No.
I'm sorry. If you do have the packet with you, there's a notch along a seawall that was filled in at one point. And again, I'm not sure when that occurred. There was a repair done on the wall. And that ultimately was there was section filled in. I know there was some concern about how that was filled in. So the repair of the wall, we're trying to develop a detail for that to see kind of what had occurred. As I understand it, it was a sort of a catch-all where there was a notch that as debris got blown across the lake. Am I still on?
Yes.
Great.
I can, I can share my screen. I have, I have. I could put it up if you want.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, I was, I was looking for it on my
So this is the, the notch that he was talking about. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
So the seawall running along the lake used to, if you just follow my cursor, did this. This little strange rectangle was, was lake. And as a course, during the course of construction, they straightened this wall out and this got filled in. Then the, the, the rain garden, which was part of the original approval, wasn't installed. Everything else, the renovation to the home, the driveway relocation was done absolutely to plan. But when we did our final inspection to close out the permit was, which was issued in 09 before, you know, under our prior wetland inspector. The rain garden wasn't installed and we noticed this the wall was, was straightened. So given the fact that the permit expired and these features are within 50 feet of the lake, it required planning board review.
He's right. So that area was about 200 square feet, I believe. And so the mitigation shown on that plan adjacent to that area is about 450 square feet. And I did the, later today in the late in the afternoon, I did forward. Yeah, and I'm sure he hasn't had a chance to look at it, a more updated version of this where we've extended that mitigation planting to the south and also provided access, an opening, so the clients can access the dock. So there is an opening there. So when he has a chance to look at that, he'll see that. So we will be doing some soil testing for the rain garden. So we want to make sure that's taken care of. We want to make sure that the mitigation planting is appropriate along the seawall to mitigate any potential impacts where the notch was. It will re, provide a buffer pretty much along the whole stretch of the waterfront, which I think will be beneficial. So we're just sort of anxious to try to get it wrapped up. I know Laura's anxious to, to sell the house. It's in the process of being sold. And this is a, one of the last things we want to get sort of buttoned up.
Okay, yes, I, I I haven't seen the new plan that says it extends further along the wall, but I did look at some aerials and it looked like there's sort of a grassy slope down to the to the wall there. And to me, you know, if you can, if you could extend the, you know, some kind of something that would, you know, filtration garden, wetland, you know, plantings, ground cover that would be better than lawn to keep the, any runoff from going right into the lake. I think that would be a much improved plan. So yes, I'm really glad to hear that you're doing that. That, that would have been something I would have looked for. So I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, so, and we agreed.
Does anyone else have any questions or observations on this? Let's see, Jan, would this be something that you might consider be comfortable doing administratively?
I think so. Yeah, absolutely. We had some minor comments, which we'll work out with Glenn, and he's already made progress in, in resubmitting a mitigation plan that addressed one of our absolutely no problem.
And hearing no other comments from anyone, I guess I would look for a motion to make this project administrative.
I'll make a motion to handle this matter administratively.
Thank you, Greg. A second. Oh, Charlene, good. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I will poll the board. Charlene?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Jerome, where'd you go?
Right here.
There you are. Jerome? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I also say yes. So the motion carries. This will be done administratively. And obviously, again, if there's a, any issues, Jan, as it goes forward, we'll, we'll hear from you. But meanwhile, I think this gets this handled and, and hope it will close out quickly for you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Okay. So, and the the next item on the agenda is calendar number 13-21 WP. This is the Strauss residence at 399 Poundridge Road in South Salem, New York. This is an application for the construction of a sunroom and a patio. And I see, I guess, Bob Ebert on, I, to represent the, the applicant.
That's correct. My name is Bob Ebert, Cross River Architects, and I'm representing Ted and Janis Strauss. This property is at 399 Poundridge Road. Uh, this property is at three nine nine Poundridge Road. It's a two point five eight acre parcel and this is a historical property. This, uh, the house on the property is, uh, on the state and, uh, federal National Register of Spark Places. And the Strauses take that, uh, responsibility of keeping the property in the house, uh, in pristine condition very seriously. Uh, what the proposal is right now, I'll share my screen if it's all right with you.
Sure.
Let's see here. Here we go. The, the property, I'm going to zoom out just a little bit for you here so you can see a little bit more of the property. But this is the south corner of the property. There's a sign on the, on the road that says peaceable kingdom. Uh, might help you identify the property if you're familiar with it. But, uh, the, uh, we're working on the south property. This is the existing house. There's a garage here and a garage here. And there's an existing, uh, small, uh, workshop. It's, uh, on the property right now. It's, uh, ten by seventeen, sitting in this corner, south corner of the property. Let me zoom back in a little bit, uh, here. So, um, there's also a current deck. It's shown by these dashed lines right here. There's a, a ten by ten deck. It's not in very good shape right now. And it's about ten feet away from the existing, uh, workshop. Uh, again, talking historically a little bit, there's a stream that's on this property, comes down and meanders. It goes through, uh, through the, the underside of the workshop. Now that, uh, workshop was originally a, a milkhouse when this, uh, uh, property was farmed, dairy farm, they would store the milk in the stream to keep it cool. So this was the, originally the, the milkhouse and that's in very good shape, uh, right now. It's in, uh, but there's a, a little spring house that was up here that's collapsed and that's, uh, that's gone from the property. The stream continues under the property and, um, and goes through a headwall, stone headwall here into a culvert, uh, that runs through a metal pipe that runs down to another headwall, gets exposed for another bit, and then again, back into, uh, through a stone headwall into a metal pipe and then back out and into the swale near the road. This is, uh, Poundridge Road here, Route one twenty-four. The septic is, is here, uh, located here. Driveway stops back at, on this part. So there's really no traffic that comes into this portion, portion of the property now. On the, uh, on the south border, there's some, uh, very tall evergreen trees that, that come along, uh, you know, the property line here. And, uh, a border, the, uh, border of the stream. So what's proposed? We're proposed, uh, proposing to build a, um, in this location, a, um, uh, twelve by seventeen, one story sunroom and a ten by twelve deck with a pergola over it, um, next to it. And this would join the north side of the, uh, existing workshop building. These will be built on piers, um, and, uh, then we'll take the roof drainage off to a, a, um, cultech recharger, you know, on, on this sub portion of the property. Uh, we really don't want to touch much of this property. We want to do as, as little as we can to, to affect the property. Now, we do, we are disturbing about five hundred square feet when we do this. And so we would, uh, provide, uh, planting where the stream is exposed in these areas within about five feet of the stream. Now, we, we did not get the mitigation plan done before the, uh, smel date, but we, we did do it since. And we submitted that to Jan and mostly it's, uh, ferns that were putting in that area. And I don't think he had any, uh, uh, comments with regard to the mitigation. Um, and that's really the, the scope of what we're proposing.
Okay. So I think the obvious question, which you might have answered is, is why is this going on the workshop and not closer to the house or, you know, which is further away from the wetland? Um, is there, is there a particular, you know, um, I, is it not going on the house because that's historic? Or could, could you just explain a little bit about what's, what's?
Yes, that's exactly correct. The house is, is, uh, is protected by that, uh, historic register. So we can't touch the outside of the house. And really, we want to leave that as a, let's say, an isolated structure so that it stays historically, uh, correct. So that you, when you're looking at that historical structure, it, you know, it, uh, it's not encumbered by this new construction that we're doing. So that's why we're putting it next to the spring house, making it part of that structure so that it, it, uh, you know, it, it clears, it clears the existing building. That's, that's the idea.
So what?
Stays out of view of that building.
Is the workshop currently used for, for what?
There's, uh, tools in there. Uh, he uses it as a, a wood shop.
Okay. So, um, I mean, you mentioned that there's a couple other garages. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking to see, is there a reason or a way to get this further away from the, the wetland? And, and I know there's garages on the other side. Is it, was that at all looked at as a possible way, place to put this? Or is this really where they, they really want it?
Well, the, um, the property bends away, as you can see, uh, from the, from the road a little bit, and there's some larger trees in here. So this is the view. This is where you have the view, um, you know, on the property and you get some beautiful sunshine in this location. That's why they, they hang out on that deck that's there now. Not in very good shape, but, uh, anyway, that, that, that's the reason we put it there. It's, that's the view.
Okay. Yeah. I guess because the, the area for the septic system is cleared, so it's got, it's open there and you can, I can, I guess I can see that. Okay.
Exactly. Yeah. And again, we're putting it on piers to make as little impact as, as we can on the, on the property.
And will there be an opening from, I wasn't clear. Will there be an opening from the sunroom into the workshop?
No, right now they have no need for that. We talked about putting a door in. I assumed they'd want a door, but they said, really? There's no reason they would never go back and forth between the two. So no.
So the reason for the attachment to the workshop is just to keep the buildings closer? I mean, to have something to anchor the building sort of as a?
Yes, visually anchored, not, not.
Yeah, visually anchor. Yeah.
Not structurally, but yeah, so that it doesn't seem like there's, you know, lots and lots of, uh, small buildings on the property that, that might look cluttered.
Yeah, Jerome here.
Yes, Jerome.
Bob, I wonder if you've done a sun travel, uh, plan of, of this. Seems to me the deck itself is just going to get to do westerly, uh, sun. And I, I wonder if that's optimal for, uh, for that intention.
That's what they like about it. Uh, that's when they sit out there, uh, in the evening, four o'clock, five o'clock in the evening. And that's what they like about it.
Very good.
Okay, um, so Jan, you had some, uh, I think we got a comment letter from you on this, right?
Yes, we issued a comment letter. Unless, um, obviously before the board for the implementation, uh, there's no other approvals required by the board. We, I'd like to, I haven't been to the site yet and I'd like, I, I would like to visit it when the snow clears, just to get an appreciation of the stream, what it consists of. We did get a wetland mitigation plan, um, from Mr. Channing. It, it looked, uh, you know, the planting plan was completely acceptable. It's what we would have expected. You know, given the proximity of the improvement to the stream, um, you know, they're, they're providing the, the minimum requirement, the one to one ratio. If there was anything else that could be done, and again, I haven't been to the site, but if there's any potential for opening up the, the culverted section, if that makes any sense, perhaps that could be considered. Again, but I, I haven't, I haven't been there to see, you know, why it was culverted or, or what it, you know, really, what's going on out there. Uh, but that, that should be a consideration. There's some additional zoning information that needs to be added to the plan, bulk zoning table, um, zoning setbacks, uh, calculations for, uh, coverage. Uh, we do need an updated survey. Uh, and just reviewing the plot plan to like an aerial, it looked like there might've been some, some expansions of asphalt areas and such. So, so it does need to be based off an updated survey. The topo, uh, I believe is Westchester County GIS and that's fine for something, you know, of this nature. Uh, we do not need a topographic survey, but an existing condition survey would be, be required. A lot of architectural information was submitted. I did not see a floor plan. I might've missed it, but, uh, if it hasn't been prepared, it should. The, the limits of disturbance should also include, um, construction access and any utilities that are going to be run down there, um, if, if any. There is a proposal for, um, a small, uh, stormwater infiltration unit. It's very close to the deck. Uh, we would look to, um, have the athlete conduct the soil testing to make sure that's a suitable location. It does, I, I would caution the applicant or the, uh, the architect to look at the separation distances between the septic and the stormwater and, uh, the construction of the, the addition to the septic. To make sure they satisfy all health department, um, setback requirements. Yeah, any, any electric or water or gas being run down, uh, to, to the building. And, you know, just designing the, the drainage system, you know, we'll need to see details and then make sure it's, it's being designed appropriately. That was, that was mainly it. Um, we should get a referral to the building inspector. I did have, uh, it looks like they'll, they'll meet the requirement that the town has a six hundred square foot, maximum on a detached accessory building, but it sounds like this is going to be well under that. But the, the building inspector should, should take a peek and just give us a quick zoning compliance review once we have the zoning information.
Jan, do we have to, um, make sure there's room for an expansion area for the septic system? Or is that? I don't know. I mean, if something's on piers, well, I don't know. I don't know what that, if that's a concern.
Well, it would be a concern if this is being constructed within the designated expansion area. That information hasn't been provided. I don't know the date or, you know, how old the septic system is and if a expansion area has been designated by the health department. It's good planning, you know, um, and the board has done this before, just, you know, if you did have a septic failure, um, and you had to install a new septic, where could it go? And is this, um, going to be preventing that from happening? Are there other locations that if they had to, they could, um, install septic? I know there are some slopes to the property, so that might be something you want to, you know, just have them look at. You know, usually, you know, we can get, uh, the applicant would generally submit, um, the as-built information that they receive from the health department on the existing septic system. And that would generally identify if there's an expansion area designated already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the well should be shown as well. Uh, I don't know if it is on the plan, but that's, that's part of the as-built that we need to see as well.
Yeah, I, that would, you know, that's sort of my question about, um, part of the question about the location here is, is it closing off? Or, you know, what, where would the expansion area go? So I think that would be helpful. I also like your idea about daylighting the, the culverted area of the stream if that's, if, if the topography or whatever caused it to get put into a culvert at the start, isn't, isn't too onerous. I mean, I think that's a great, great idea. Um, and perhaps when you go visit, I don't know, is, you talked about a collapsed spring house. I don't, I'm assuming that that is not something that is a danger or, you know, that's sort of, uh, a threat to the stream in any way that it's, um, by collapse, it's more like it's not useful as opposed to collapsed, it's, it's eroding the stream in some way.
It's been removed.
Oh, it's been removed?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, great. So.
Maybe just take that off the plan then, so it's just not.
Sure. I, I know it was on the survey, which is why I indicated it, uh.
But, but it's been removed. Okay. So perhaps you can stop screen sharing for a second?
Sure. Well, if, if you, if I may, um, I, I would be, um, opposed, I think, to exposing the, uh, the stream. Now, you haven't seen it yet, but, uh, the headwalls, the stone headwalls are in great shape. This was built, again, um, uh, well over a hundred years ago. So my, uh, my take on it is keep the property historically accurate, keep it as, uh, pristine as it is, rather than sort of trying to make it into something it's not. The culverts were put in to allow the farmers to draw, drive their tractors across the stream. That was the purpose for the, uh, uh, several culverts that were, that were, uh, put in there. And so, uh, you know, it's been there, uh, well over a hundred years. So, um, my attitude would be, uh, keep it historically accurate.
Okay, I'll ask, I mean, ask Jan to do it. If it's, if the culvert has been there a hundred years, it might not be in great shape anyway. I mean, I, uh, so.
Does it have a pipe?
Uh, that, there looks to be a pipe in there, yes. Uh, you could see the headwall and then the clay pipe at the end of it, but that's about all I can see.
Yeah, clay. Okay. Well, it sounds like this should get, um, I'd look for consensus, maybe to refer this to the building inspector as Jan suggested.
That'd be fine. Sure.
Once it, once we have the zoning information.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Is this something that anybody feels we need to do a site walk for in the snow?
I don't think we need a sidewalk, but are we, are we gonna get some sort of a mitigation plan or do we have it? Or I don't know if we've received it yet, or I don't know if it came out in the last day or so.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was received. I received it via email a week or so ago. Perhaps it came in after the, the submission deadline.
Right. No, I, I got that. So I'm just wondering if we should review that before we do it, before we make any other decisions, especially now, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, you know? Because I think a, a, a site, a sidewalk now is not going to be too productive. So maybe we can see what they're putting down on paper first.
Well, I, I'd like to have, um, Jan get a chance to see it. And I mean, maybe we're going to have some warmer weather, but there's a lot of snow to melt. So, but, um, I, I'd like to do that and perhaps we can, um, ask for this to come back in, in March, um, if you think you're going to get a chance to go out and see it. And if not, well, I, I guess I'd say, let's look at it in March and then if you can't visit, perhaps we'll adjourn it till April. Because I think it's important to get Jan's view of what's going on here.
Okay.
I do. Would you expect the applicant to resubmit to address comments between that timeframe? Or you just want to put it on the calendar and I'll do a site inspection?
Well, I think we do need some of the, like, as you said, to refer to the building inspector, we need to have a, um, the zoning on it. Unfortunately, I think our submission date is like Thursday or Friday. So I don't know if there's a chance to get that done. Um, and again, I think it would be important to figure out if there's a expansion area that's designated and to make sure we're not on top of it, um, with, with this, you know, with the new area here.
The expansion area is west, west of the existing system and downhill of the existing system.
Yes. Okay, towards the road.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Um.
We'll show them.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I could get to the site between now and, and the next meeting. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, set a meeting up with Bob and, and walk it with him. I'm sure, I could get the site between now and, and the next meeting. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, set a meeting up with Bob and, and walk it with him.
Great. So I think that's what we should plan to do.
Yeah.
And hear from any, any updates. Um, I think I feel much better that, that the expansion area, we're not on top of it with this application. So that's good. Um, okay. Um, so we'll get more information on this. We'll refer to the building inspector. Jan will report back in March and we see where we go.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is just the minutes from January 19th, 2021.
I move that be accepted as submitted. Second.
Thank you. So a move by Jerome, seconded by Greg. Um, and I will poll the board. So Charlene.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Maureen. You're muted. She's nodding yes, but we want it on tape.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
And I also, um, support that. Um, I, I guess I should say just on the record, uh, that we had scheduled a site walk for three Beaver Pond Lane, um, at our last meeting. And we, uh, canceled that because of the snow cover and feeling that we would not be able to see, uh, the topography and the, the issue that, um, that would be out there. And that was at Jan's recommendation that we cancel it. Um, again, I'm not comfort, not confident that we'll be done with snow. So I'm not sure that, uh, we should, we could try to schedule a site walk for that again. Um, and because we are having warmer weather and cancel it if we have to, or we can decide not to.
The, uh, next meeting is one week sooner than the gap between January and February meeting. So that being the case, why don't we just see where we are on March 16th?
Okay.
This way we won't be, this way we won't be waiting as long, in other words, as we did with this last, uh.
Right. And I, I would agree. This, this matter is still at a very preliminary stage. Jan and I are going to be speaking with, um, uh, the parties to whom the violation was issued. So why don't we just put it over to March and make a site, there's a, uh, decision at that point.
That'd be great. Okay. So with that, I'd look for, oh, the next meeting date, as we have just discussed, is March 16th, 2021. So with that, I guess I'd look for a motion to adjourn unless.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Greg.
Second.
By Jerome. Any discussion? Okay. Yeah.
Good idea.
Charlene.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Maureen. You're muted.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
And I also say yes. So thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
At nine twenty-four. Thank you.
Night all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.